Mayor Walker, all members of council are present.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. I call this meeting to order. Ms. Thomas, will you do roll call, please?
Mr. Payne? Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Ms. McGill?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
All right, thank you. All members are present. Next, we'll have an overview of the process and the city's perspective from Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor City Council, and the public. Just want to go over what we talked about in our last meeting in terms of what we said that we would do in terms of getting this information back to you. And we started off with questions that we asked to the boards and commissions. And those questions were, were there any issues pending before your board or commission that require urgent attention? Then our second question to them was, do you have any concerns that you think council and the city manager should know? And then our last part of that questioning questionnaire was to our staff was, you know, we asked them if council approves certain board and commissions that meet virtually, what are your staff requirements? Are there any concerns that relate to staff capacity? And was staffing these boards and commission meetings require a change in our teleworking arrangement? And then from that, as we discussed, we forwarded that information to our city attorney, Mr. Blair, to determine if there are any state or city codes that would require these boards and commissions to meet. And then we are here today to present those findings to the city council. And with that said, I'll take questions. If there aren't any questions, I'm going to pass to Mr. Blair for him to give us his legal analysis. Mr. Blair? Mr. Blair?
Yes, sir. So let's start with the basic legislative enactment recently concerning all of the city's boards and commissions. And that came through an amendment to the, to both the fiscal year 20 budget as well as the upcoming biennial budget by Governor Northam. The governor proposed an amendment that allows for all public bodies in Virginia to meet electronically. And the wording of the amendments, basically, it applies to the business of the public body. There's certain language, but we won't go into all that. But in effect, it basically says to conduct the public business, which would include the business of your public bodies, which includes boards and commissions. So the first step of the legal analysis is can all of our city boards and commissions meet electronically? And per these amendments to both this year's budget and the upcoming biennial budget, yes, the answer is yes. The second layer of analysis is are there boards and commissions that are statutorily required to meet? The Board of Equalization, I think I mentioned at your previous council meeting, it is required to meet. It hears tax appeals. I believe Mr. Wheeler can confirm, but they're already looking at dates in June for your tax assessment. And they are statutorily required to meet. The only other board and commission that there's a state statute is the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has a, it's required to meet once every two months. However, it is important to note that this council on March 25th took an action as part of an emergency ordinance when this began to state that all the application deadlines and land use deadlines have been, in effect, abrogated for the remainder of Dr. Richardson's declaration of emergency. I couldn't really find anywhere where any other board or commission is statutorily required to meet. And again, as far as the Planning Commission goes, while it states it shall meet every two months, your, the council's emergency ordinance of March 25th of this year, in effect, waived the deadlines for all of the public hearings and other applications related to land use matters. Saying that, I did want to go into another level of analysis, and that is, you know, boards and commissions and sort of, there's a, you know, boards and commissions, it should be stated, in and of themselves have the ability to meet, to call a meeting. However, the reason I want to go over this is looking at the council's March 25th resolution as well as other FOIA requirements for electronic meetings. In effect, you're going to need some staff and logistical support from the city. And I think that's really what this work session would be getting at today, per Dr. Richardson's opening comments. You know, there's issues related to the platform that will be used. There are issues related to webinar technology, for instance, and moderation. There are issues related to whether the council wants certain boards and commissions televised as well. You know, I think it's, it's an interesting question. If you're having an electronic virtual meeting via Zoom, as we are right now, do you also want that televised on the city's public access station? And again, there are just certain, these are logistical matters that even though legally, yes, a board and commission can meet. In order to comply with FOIA, which requires open meetings, as well as the council's March 25th resolution, which encourage public participation to the maximum extent possible, I'm hoping that this work session can have the council provide some guidance to staff on how to meet those mandates and, and your preferences for when boards and commissions meet, what you want to see in terms of moderation, in terms of the webinar moderator and televising these meetings and other policy considerations like.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blair. And before we started, council, unless you have any questions for Dr. Richardson or Mr. Blair, who's going to give the opportunity for the public to comment? You have questions for the two of them? I can't see. Counselor Payne and Snook, do you have any questions at this time?
No.
Okay. So, Mr. Wheeler, is there anyone signed up or the public comment?
If you'd like to speak to council, please click the raise your hand icon in the webinar, and we'll call upon people in the order in which they raise their hands. We do have 13 people as attendees of the webinar at the moment. At this time, Mayor Walker, none of them are raising their hand.
Okay. All right, so council discussion.
I mean, how do we think it will be best to kind of go through this? I think in this matrix we have, there are some who are just saying flat out, we, we don't have anything urgent or pending. We don't have any concerns with waiting until we're in another phase of this. And so I would say unless there's any concerns among council to set those aside, I would, that's a good starting point. I think it applies to about four or five of them? Maybe six?
Yeah, but I guess just what, yeah, just what you all had in mind for the other, other boards and commissions. I guess once you all discuss, I mean, once we have the discussion on which boards and commissions, we also need to just decide, are they meeting at the same time? They normally meet, what that schedule looks like? How would we handle that with, you know, the staff? And then, and I think that it would be very important to also televise this meeting. So any of those discussion points that Mr. Blair brought up, then we need to have those. And it's probably not a one size fits all, right type of situation. So we can just go down the list. Okay. Do that, all right?
That's fine. That's fine.
So the first board and commission listed was the ADA advisory committee. And? Any thoughts there?
Did our staff weigh in on that one? I don't see any comments from staff.
No.
Is there a position of staff on this? And if, oh, you're muted, son?
Yeah.
No, not at this time.
All right.
All right, then. I don't know, that's a priority group that we should pull together at this point.
So the next was the bike ped advisory committee. So are we reading what they, so active streets and co-sign a letter that supports, I don't know if we're reading all of this, traveling. So they want to be able to, I guess, make some adjustments based on the closure, but I don't know if we can do that anyway, because our streets are still active, even though maybe not as active. But I guess, staff.
I don't read their comments as requesting a meeting or requesting the ability to meet.
Well, they just said a letter they're signing.
Yeah.
So I guess they, so if these, Mr. Blair, one question, if these boards and commission are meeting to send a letter, what is the public requirement to have public input on those? Because I think that's part of the potential, you know, issue too, is to make sure that whatever comes out of these groups, that other people at least have access to the information.
Right, great question. You know, as, as you're probably aware, there are certain things within the Virginia Code that require public hearings. For instance, rezoning requires a public hearing. This coming Monday, coming attractions, the budget requires a public hearing, and we'll have one on Monday. But other items of business do not. But, you know, just to take the bike ped committee, I do think the spirit of the council's resolution, or I should say ordinance on March 25th was, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but considering the, the novelty of these electronic meetings and, and sort of, you know, individuals not being used to this type of, of meeting format, that the council wanted to encourage as much public participation as possible. Now, you know, quite frankly, the bike and ped committee does not, if, if they were meeting in the second floor conference room, they don't have to have a public comment session on adopting a resolution for a letter.
Because it's open.
Right. You, the bike and ped committee, though, if they met to approve this letter, would still have to have some sort of meeting format like this, where anybody who wished to dial into the webinar could, so that the meeting would be quote unquote, open pursuant to FOIA. But again, they aren't legally required at that point to, to have a public comment period on that item of business. Now, they certainly, they're free to. If they've said, you know, we'd like to hear from the public about their thoughts on this letter, any board and commission is free to ask the public if they'd like to speak on a matter. But again, it's not a requirement in that instance.
For a letter to be agreed upon, though, they have to convene?
Well, under FOIA, I, here's what I would say. Under the Freedom of Information Act, there are two ways to look at the letter. One is if you want an official action and say this comes from the committee itself, the committee itself would need to hold a vote. And the only way the committee can hold a vote as a public body is through an open meeting. The other option would be. I'm sorry. The other option would be for the committee members to email among themselves, say, do you support this letter? And while the, the letter itself could not say legally that the bike and ped committee is writing this letter and is endorsing this letter, it could say that as the chair of the bike and ped committee, I've spoken with other committee members, and here's the sense of the committee.
That's helpful, thank you.
Could each one individually sign the letter as a citizen and then a member of the committee?
They can.
Okay. So I'm moving on from that one, but they, there will be instructions, I guess, sent out to the boards and commissions, and that would be one of the bullet points that would be added, if we, whatever we decide. So the Board of Equalization, it looks like that they want to meet, and they sent the, I think, June 11th and 12th dates for, for their request, you know, to meet. I understand that my only concern there would be having any in-person meetings. So are we able to mandate that the meetings are virtually and then televised or no?
You know, the council itself can't mandate that the hearings themselves are virtual, but certainly they can, certainly you can ask that they be virtual. And again, it, it also is probably just in every committee's best interest at this point, still with the social distancing guidelines that are in effect. That's a three-person committee. And usually there's staff in the room and taxpayers who are appealing their assessments. So in and of itself, it's probably better to have a virtual meeting. But I, again, they, they can be televised, but it is important, I think, with the Board of Equalization to understand that that work is, as I stated at the beginning, that's statutorily required. They are, they are going to have to meet for tax appeals.
So council, councilors, what are your comments about that board?
I'm sorry. Certainly sounds like we can make it work.
I think that's one of our top priority boards.
All right, so next we have the CDBG home task force.
Karen?
Yeah.
I've, for me, I think that's one of the other, another one of the important ones, especially since they are going to be meeting about COVID funding that has a time limit and a timeframe which we have to apply for. All right. I'm still not clear. They have, they, they still have one more meeting to finish this up? And I saw Erin sent something. I'm just making sure I'm clear on what's.
Well, we have, we have to point, I think we still have to appoint members, don't we?
Um, Erin?
We, we have to appoint members to the Ridge Street Task Force, but not the CDBG Steering Committee.
Correct.
Is CDBG Task Force already planning to meet to discuss the COVID, new COVID money?
We do have to towards June, but obviously it would be done virtually. So there's likely just one meeting to get you guys through this process that's left? Yes, for the CDBGCV applications, we could probably wrap it out in one meeting.
And the task force? Is that something we want to discuss? We should just discuss that now, right? Instead of having to come back and amend the list? Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Okay. So what's your position on the, the task force? And when do you think those meetings would need to start happening?
For the CDBGCV applications, they're due May 18, next week. After that, I would, I usually send the applications electronically. From there, we would meet over Zoom, and I'm guessing that would be, or I have it projected out to be mid-June. So this, this commissioning meeting is under FOIA, though, so it needs to be noticed, and it needs to have the ability for the public to access the Zoom meetings, correct? Correct.
Yeah. So I would think that every meeting that we would approve, that we would also be approving for that to happen.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so it says, CETA, there's no urgent issues, according to, I guess, Chris there. The Electoral Board, they still have a lot going on and a lot to meet about. And so they would be, they would need to be on the list. Mr. Wheeler, did you already look at logistics in terms of making all of this work?
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We have met with Sunny Wong with our IT staff to talk about the Zoom capabilities. We have also looked at the different venues that we have in City Hall that could be made capable for these in-person meetings down the road. So we're trying to plan ahead as well for when City Hall is opened. And we may be in that situation where we, we are in a hybrid setup, where some people would be remote and some would be in City Hall. I do have some information about some of the different broadcast options. TV broadcasts, like the one we're doing right now, where we're doing a live TV broadcast with a webinar, is the most resource-intensive and complex type of production that we do. And typically, we've only done that, we've only broadcast four different meetings, council, planning commission, Board of Architectural Review, and the CRHA. So typically, we focus our broadcast on those four. All the other boards and commissions, you know, meet without the meeting being streamed or broadcast in any way. It may be recorded for the purposes of taking minutes to making that available to the public later. And then there are different options then about, that we could take depending on council's interest. And I can, I can put up a graphic if you want to do that now, or we can save it for later, that, that goes through some of those options.
Okay, we can just, let us finish the list, and then let's look at that.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, so now we're at the PAC, the Housing Advisory Committee. And they would be on the list. All right, and did anyone want to have any comments about that, or are we just?
Well, I got, I think a lot of community members have asked it to meet, and I could envision it even being just like one time, not, you know, multiple times all scheduled at once.
Mr. Blair, what, what is the requirement for subcommittees? Because I know that they usually have the committee meetings and the subcommittee meeting.
Good question. It's, it's the same. Subcommittees of public bodies also have to be open to the public, and therefore, under this electronic meeting schematic that we're working under, the subcommittee meetings of any of these boards and commissions also would prob, would have to be electronically available to the public.
Okay. All right, the Human Rights Commission. And I see Mr. Nehemiah, how are you, Todd? It's good to see you. Did you have any comments?
No, you know, I believe Chantel and commissioners sort of circulated those questions and provided some response back. I know they're anxious to keep working, but, you know, would move that to council to decide, you know, given limited resources, what, what's possible in that regard, so.
Okay.
How?
So, go ahead.
How have we been receiving many human rights violations or complaints in general? How has it been the last two months really, as compared to before?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'm still getting calls remotely. As far as allegations of discrimination, I've had a few, none of, none have been within our jurisdiction at this point, so they're all external referrals. And I would say overall, the number of people calling for direct assistance from the Office of Human Rights, as our purview, has diminished slightly. I think my theory in that regard would be, you know, all the venues in which discrimination typically, typically occur are closed. And so therefore, we're seeing less of that. So I hope that answers the question.
That's what my gut was going, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, that was actually holding up, and that maybe for some reason we weren't getting more in an area we hadn't expected.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I'm thinking about it. If issues arise, especially along the lines of, you know, housing and after, whenever we're fully open, and if people have been unable to pay their, you know, rent, and they are, you know, faced with eviction, things like that, I mean, I can imagine that would be something that would increase calls to your office. So I acknowledge that you're in there alone now, and that there is work, you know, related to equity that definitely someone needs to be monitoring. And so I would, I would, if the board wanted to meet, I definitely would support us supporting boards that directly, you know. boards that directly, you know, help with equity use in the city. All right, next we have the Measurements and Solutions. And I'm on that committee and Council McGill was also a, a part of that. And we have only met once, so. And they acknowledged that. The Minority Business Commission, they said no pending or urgent needs. The Parking Advisory Panel said no urgent issues or concerns. Parks and Rec Advisory Board said no urgent issues or concerns. Placed. So is the, is the applications open, Mr. Blair, for us to, or Ms. Thomas? For us to appoint that, a new rep?
I think that was someone they had appointed themselves to this other group. And that person has said they're willing to continue in that role, even if they're not formally on place and I guess report back, but to continue to serve in that capacity for the, um, the long range planning and it's all for the, it's all for like the,
Comp Plan.
Comp Plan. I can't even think. Yeah.
But the consul.
Yeah. So I, I think that they're all set and they were comfortable keeping that representative on there, even though that her term has ended on place.
Okay.
That was my understanding as well.
So Planning Commission? And the Board for Review, where did they come in together? I didn't see that.
I think they work in tandem in many cases, so.
All right. And so thoughts there?
I, I think we need to reengage the Planning Commission at this point.
Alex, do, and Missy, do we have anything coming that needs to be seen by the Planning Commission soon?
Yeah, but, um, go ahead, Missy.
Uh, we, we have a couple of items that, a couple of public hearing items that are on hold since April, March, April. One of them is, uh, is, is, has a lot of public interest to it. The other one is a smaller project. We also have a site plan and an entrance corridor review application that would be ready probably in the next month or so. But otherwise, everything else, the, the other things that are pending are, would not be ready before July.
So the June meeting should go forward?
That is an option that you all can provide. Um, we're, we're not hearing, we're hearing from one of the applicants for the site plan and entrance quarter. We have not gotten any strong concern from the two public hearing items.
You said two out of those three things are fairly straightforward, you think?
They would, potentially. We, we just never know, but potentially.
The third one isn't a public hearing requirement. It's just a decision by.
Correct. There's the site plan and the entrance quarter review item. They do not have public hearings. They do have advertisement requirements. And so folks would have the option during matters from the public if they wanted to speak about those items.
I think the other question I had was around what things we're not seeing because we're not taking new applications. Like how much of a backlog are you anticipating that to be?
Um, it's really, it's really hard to tell. We have a few items that are, um, that are waiting. But those items cannot be completed until the applicant hosts the public meetings that are required before the applications are complete. Um, and since those are, are not encouraged at this, at this point in time, that that the, those items cannot be complete until the opportunity for folks to have public meetings is available.
And Missy, is that like the neighborhood meetings where they were gathered? Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. And just, this is Alex, just to add to, to that. The, the budget amendment that Mr. Blair talked about a few minutes ago, that the governor signed also required that the local governments, uh, if they're going to have a public hearing or public-related process must consider access. And that access is pretty important. Which will include depending on whether it's a rezoning or SUP that the applicant visit the neighborhoods. And then in terms of that visitation, you know, what do we consider adequate access during this period? And that notwithstanding, if there is a public here in schedule before the Planning Commission or the City Council, what constitutes a public access? Is that when the material is advertised or the project is advertised in the newspaper or posted on site and the council conducts its meetings or the Planning Commission conducts its public hearings and people call in, you know, how do we, because everything in terms of calling in has to be entered into record if it's a public hearing. Mr. Blair, correct me if I'm wrong. And if somebody sends a letter, it's gonna be a public, entered into record. Are we gonna have some kind of satellite? Satellite area where people can go and sit and space out six feet apart and listen to the Planning Commission or City Council, public hearing or what have you, you know, how are we gonna do that? Those are the things, some of the logistics we need to figure out. Then of course, we have to discuss the staff capacity, Communications Department, you know, how all that is going to walk out before we move in that direction.
I think that's why we're doing this today. And I, I don't see those decision-making places more di- more different than our council meetings, especially when we're about to pass a budget and we're having a public hearing, which I would consider a pretty big decision that we're having to do in this environment. And so I would see us for a Planning Commission and a public hearing, providing the same opportunities that we're providing to the public in our own council meeting decisions, so.
I think we also have to acknowledge that we haven't had the public participation that we normally have during this time. And specifically for Planning Commission, Place, Bar, all of those, or the BAR, whichever way it goes, all of those are, you're talking about an area that we already have major equity issues, right? And so anyone who is still ready to go with a project at this time, that's my main concern there. Would be to make sure that we are taking all of those factors into consideration. And this is a prime time when people are exhausted and distracted for inequities to grow. And that's how it happens. And those type of things are not, they don't happen accidentally. They happen by intentional, like decisions that are made. And it may be one decision at a time and they may be just small little puzzle pieces that create what the current environment that we currently have in Charleston. But that's my only concern with this is just to make sure that we, one, don't create more of a divide because this is the time that those type of things happen. And then, and I have my book that I'm reading, The Great Divide, that everyone can pick up in the public if they need some help understanding that. But also, we need to make sure that it's not taxing on staff, you know, more taxing than it has to be. So here would be another one of those meetings where would we allow the smaller committee meetings or will we just allow one meeting? Would we stick to like just that, you know, one meeting a month and everything would have to get taken care of there? Or would we allow them to meet before the meeting? And after the meeting, you know, or at other times?
Well, is there anything that the bar has to look at for the? So what I wanted to check was, so it sounds like there's a couple of things that we're ready to go to the next, to the March meeting. That have already gone through all the process they need to go through. They were just waiting on the Planning Commission meeting. And then I was just wondering if there was anything that was coming. I'm, I guess I'm still learning the difference where, where the bar has to step in with the Planning Commission or before the Planning Commission and kind of how that process works.
Depends. In terms of the AR, it depends on where the project is. We have historically designated areas and the BAR usually like downtown historic districts, the projects within those areas tend to go to BAR as well as Planning Commission. You know, so if we are looking at activating the Planning Commission, the BAR should simultaneously be activated, you know, along with the Planning Commission. Cause sometimes they can look at the same project because of the location of the project.
There is currently one item that's on the BAR agenda to move forward that has a site plan that would follow up with that. The site plan would not be ready until probably July, but the item is ready to be scheduled for the BAR.
If the Planning Commission, like let's say council says the Planning Commission or BAR can meet, we don't have the ability to say what they can and can't discuss, right? They could just, once they meet on their own, choose what agenda items to discuss?
Well, let's, let's talk about that because no, the council does not necessarily have the authority to say, Planning Commission, you may only consider these items, right? However, that's, you know, that's, that's formalism, but the practical practical reality here is, let's say you said as a council, Planning Commission, you can meet on items that don't require a public hearing. But the Planning Commission said, we're gonna set our own agenda. We're gonna consider items that require a public here. They can conduct a public hearing, but if it gets to council and, and you're not satisfied, remember they are an advisory body. You can always send the item back to the Planning Commission and say, I'm sorry, we don't feel like you had enough public input. We're going to refer this back to the Planning Commission for further study. Or you can move forward with the item and have your own public hearing as a council. So again, there's the formal answer of no, the council can't dictate to a board or commission what is on its agenda. But the practicality on things like a rezoning or these other matters that require public input is if you're not satisfied with public input, you could always refer it back to the Planning Commission. So I, I think our office, the City Attorney's Office would advise the Planning Commission and staff that if council is saying, don't do public hearings during this, we, we would just advise them it's not a good idea to go forward. Cause it would likely be referred back from the council to the Planning Commission.
Do we have a sense for, um, what other, how other municipalities are working around that concern?
It depends. Yeah. There are some that are doing it factually. And there are some that are, they have a holding area for people to come in and then make, provide their comments on a given project. And there are people, some jurisdictions, uh, people submit their comments or by email or by telephone and those comments, email are entered into records as part of the public hearing, you know. So that's how some communities are, are doing that. And then again, it varies from community to community. The city of Charleston has a very unusual community engagement process compared to several communities. We have a very extensive public engagement process and and sometimes it's, um, it's reinforced by equity or social equity issues and things like that. And that needs to be taken into consideration as well. But what we are looking at doing, some communities are already doing it essentially, the one difference I see is our huge emphasis on community engagement process.
We don't want to lose that.
And even yesterday, it was good to hear from the consultants that that's, you know, they are, they understand that that's a major challenge at this time. It was already a challenge right before now, but that they are, you know, committed to the brainstorming sessions needed to try to figure, figure that out. So hopefully that's successful. Even for the just comp plan and, you know, those other items.
I was also just curious on what the status is of accepting new applications and when that may shift. I'm just, depending on how long this road is gonna be.
It, it, well, it depends on, uh, on Friday. We talked with Joe Powers, Deputy Fire Chief regarding our transition plan. He's working with all the department right now in terms of developing the transition plan. In terms of relative to that, in terms of accepting the application, I think that's part of the reason why council is discussing the boards and commission today. Of course, we, we can't start doing that until the, the council resolution and probably and the city manager's executive order. I don't know. The, the city attorney may have to weigh in, you know. But we can't start accepting a new application until those local orders are lifted. And then we go into that process of accepting the new application. And having said that, there is something I would like to add, which has been missing in this discussion. That is the safety of the workforce. If you look at, if you look at the configuration of NDS Office, you'll find out that the location of our front desk is very unusual. In other words, the corridor, the, the hallway splits our office into east and west. And the staff movement is not very efficient. If we open the office and we have customers coming in, you know, the staff moving around is gonna be interacting with the customers. And you can't tell who has COVID-19 or who doesn't, which begs the question, is wearing going to be mandatory? Are the folks coming in to submit application, are they gonna be required to wear face mask, you know? Uh so these are some of the things that that also needs to be discussed uh as we plan to uh. Uh start accepting new applications.
Mr. Blair, I wasn't clear that it was our order that was preventing us from receiving new applications.
There's some nuance there, but in effect, City Hall is closed per um. Per Doc, per both Dr. Richardson's declaration of emergency and. Also, I, he's issued further communications that close City Hall to the public.
But we could accept, like, we're accepting other applications through mail.
I I would note that the newer applications, in order to be complete.
Yeah.
Prior to have a community meeting.
Right.
And that, that, that portion of the application cannot be completed at this time for things that are beyond our control. Um we are continuing to do technical support um with applicants. Um we do have a a plethora of things that continue to come in and we're continuing to move those applications forward. Um but at this time, the, the requirements for uh the discretionary reviews. Require that there be a community meeting signed off. Um prior to the application being submitted and uh that opportunity is not available at this time.
And we also have to be mindful of having sat in on some of those um. More recently with the South First Street project of staff coming together to review a process. Um I don't know how often, you know, that's the case, but um I'm sure that those documents that were pulled out. It has to be, um you can't scan those in, like there have to be people sitting and looking at those. So we just also, I think, have to be mindful of um. The, you know, safety of staff as well as the public when, with all of this. Um and just know that some things may be limited until we figure that out. And if it's a way to figure them out, but I know that there were, you know, pages that were the size of the table out on the table. So, you know, that's just, we have to just be mindful of of that part of the process.
And I'd, I'd also to Counselor Hill, your, your question, I'd, I'd ask. Mr. Ikafuna and Ms. Creasy, there, there are still applications being accepted via mail and. And are, are we still accepting limited app, are we still having hours to accept paper applications at India?
Yeah, we are, we are, and uh um uh some by mail, some uh do uh. Send electronic copies, uh but not the bigger plans. And then, of course, every Friday. Between ten A M and twelve P M, we have a two-hour drop-off. Uh so we are still uh accepting those and the two-hour drop-off, we usually. Spray them after, at the end of uh uh the day. Uh so we, by Monday, it gets sanitized, then on Tuesday, uh staff will start processing them. So the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, so that's one that's on there and we just have to figure out. I mean, I think that's all of these are gonna require additional discussion. So the retirement commission says they have sensitive matters um. That they need to meet before the end of the month.
Yes, and I think that's a one-time thing for right now, from what I gathered.
Okay. Um the sister city commission says their funding. Requests that need to be voted on and other budgetary items and um. The issue of the Spanish-speaking sister city to address and finalize. Um and staff knows that there's membership changes um. And need attention before the June, before June thirtieth, when the term ends and um. Okay, and they, I guess there's a request for them to meet this month and next month. So um. I don't know.
K- Kena says that, yeah. No, Kena sits on there. I'm just understanding, like, these budgetary things. I'm sure a lot of, a lot of them have budgetary considerations. I'm just not sure what is considered pressing.
I do not know of a pressing issue that's a budget concern. I do know that there was a request to have an, an essay contest. With a cash prize. Um to me, that didn't sound urgent, but it's for consideration. It's for your um consideration.
Can they not have that contest without meeting?
They would have to discuss it and their subcommittee uh meetings, there are several people who work in the school system. Who um would probably be able to coordinate something like that. I know there would be. Um some equity things to address with the outreach portion of it. So um I think they just want some feedback from council as to what. If they are given the allowance to meet, what would be some parameters for meeting?
I mean, I'm gonna be honest, I mean, as much as I like the sister cities and I understand that this is something that's important. Um with the limited amount of staff time that we have for things that we really have to get going for the working of the city. This one is on a lower place for me for allocating staff time and resources.
I'd agree with that. Okay.
As a, as an abstract proposition, I would agree with that too. I'm just, I'm not, I guess I'm. I'm curious as to how good a job we're gonna be able to do being the, the agency or the entity that rations. Uh staff time in this respect, and I don't know, uh Mr. Wheeler, to, to what extent, I mean, is there a. Some, some sort of weekly budget for your time for doing this kind of thing? That we should be looking at as, as a way to guide our thinking on this, or, or is it that even, is that even a, a fair question?
I don't think it's fair, but.
It, it is an assessment we've tried to make. Keep in mind, you know, the communications team is a small staff. We have.
One person, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're missing one person right now, so we have four people, including myself. Three of us are involved in broadcast. You know, in the, in, before the pandemic, we covered the four meetings uh that I mentioned previously. Obviously, we're not doing that work now, so, you know, one could argue there is time in our day to um, to facilitate other meetings. I think, you know, a key goal for us, Mr. Snook coming in is to, is to do that, to be available. To facilitate the work of both council and your boards and commissions. Um we also want to make it a positive opportunity for the community to engage with us. Um, you know, we don't want to put technology in front of you that's a distraction, you know, during the meeting. So we don't want the officials and the participants in the public meeting to be challenged, you know, by any new technology that we might. Throw your way. So, you know, we've gotten accustomed to Zoom webinars. We're comfortable with this approach at this time. Um we also want to manage this public queue, and I think that's, by that, I mean the people who want to speak at a public meeting. And Mr. Blair has talked about how we need to make that accommodation. And our approach has been to try to um. Behave like it was a physical gathering, that there's some accountability, that we know who's stepping in front of you. And who is raising their hand to speak. They're giving us their full name. Um uh we recognize them because we see them in some way, so we're not having anonymous participation. Um and the last thing I would say is that, you know, we're, in, as we review this, we're trying to look at FOIA and the public notice requirements. Um as they've been amended during the pandemic. So all, all that being said. Um Mayor Walker, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but it might be a good. Um it'd be a good um way for me to describe our assessment. If I could just, if I could just put this up on the screen. And I have sent it to council via email. Um I don't expect you to look at that email right now. Uh but if this isn't visible on your screen, you have that as a reference. So the three boxes, colored boxes on the bottom are below the line that says normal. You know, this is, normal business is what we used to do. So most of what we're talking about right now is in the green box, traditional boards and commissions. They weren't broadcast, they weren't streamed. So communications really isn't involved. You move to the right side, the two traditional blue boxes. Where we're doing live TV, we have in-person activities, uh we're doing it from chambers, we're doing it from city space. And that takes one to two of my staff uh to broadcast those meetings. Above that line that goes across the whole page is our sort of approach during the pandemic. Uh right now, we are doing what's we would call hybrid two. So we're doing an in-person meeting from chambers and we're doing a webinar, because most of you are not here. It's on live TV and we're streaming it on all our channels. This meeting requires two of us to be here, uh me to run the webinar and David Dillahun to run the TV broadcast. Um so those things above the line and to the top right are more resource-intensive. Over on the left side, we've got some options uh that we can put in front of you. And to your question, Mr. Snook, how much of our time? Potentially, it doesn't take any communications time, but it will take somebody's time. Somebody needs to host uh a webinar if that's part of our approach. So on the top left box, if it's webinar only and all the participants are remote and we're streaming it. You know, that just takes a staff member trained to be a host on Zoom. Uh give them some tips about what to look for when it comes to public interactions and how to handle uh activating people's mics for. Public comment, how to facilitate the Q and A module and address any questions that come up via chat. And, you know, I, I participated last night in the Alabama Oral Planning Commission meeting just to get a sense of how they were doing things. And um they're also using the Zoom webinar. They were all uh remote. And uh they were able to bring the public in for a public hearing, although nobody showed up for the public hearing I was watching. Uh but they had that opportunity. Again, people could raise their hand and they could bring them into the meeting. Um the hybrid one option is something to think about as we get into phase two of the recovery. And that's when uh City Hall is opened again, there's interest in having staff and members of boards and commissions. In the same room. And have a webinar um for the people who aren't comfortable yet coming to City Hall or being in a smaller room. And maybe that's just because of physical distancing, that we have to limit the number of people that can join us that way. Uh we have several meeting rooms in City Hall that are uh ready for this kind of activity. Uh second floor conference room is one example that you're familiar with and you've done interviews in there before. Um and we could make that visible to the outside world through Zoom and people could both participate and so others could be in the room. So this is one way to think about some of the choices and, and, you know, it, it's not necessary for you to decide right now. Which box applies to which board or commission. I will tell you that the less live television we do, the less resources are involved. Now, that being said, any of these meetings that we are doing a webinar for, we can record. And we can broadcast them after the fact. They just wouldn't be uh on a live broadcast. So we do have that option available to you as well. So I'll stop there. Um in the, the deck I sent you, there's some additional slides um related to. Um some other things that I think might be of interest. Um to counsel, I'm gonna skip that slide. You know, one, one thing to think about with respect to time, this slide on your screen, I went back to uh three months during twenty nineteen. Just to see how many public meetings we had. And on average, we had about sixteen public meetings a month of these various boards and commissions. It took a total of about forty-two hours each month. So if you tried to go to every one of those uh during your work hours, that would be twenty-four percent of your work time. Only five of those meetings each month, though, were broadcast by communications. Um so that gives you a little bit of uh compare and contrast to uh resources required in uh this time last year. I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
No, it's really helpful. Thank you. Um. And just now that you've presented that, I think there's a lot of opportunities now that we know it's recorded, that, you know, even looking at this list. Um that a lot can fall into that left-hand side.
The sister cities wanted to set up their own Zoom and make it public. They could do that and then broadcast it on the Facebook afterwards. Would that, um Attorney Blair, would that fall into FOIA?
It would. Uh Vice Mayor McGill and, and I do want maybe Brian, Brian and Kena and Sunny and I had talked. Yesterday a little bit about some issues. Um. You know, the idea, are you talking about Zoom with no webinar and just say, we're gonna put out a URL? Come on in and we'll broadcast this on Facebook. Is that?
The first option, yes, that um Brian was kind of bringing up where it's more.
Well, he, he's saying it's his actual webinar, that would allow for public to be controlled, that a- active, but we know who they are. It's not just a wide-open Zoom call that we give everyone a link to. So I think there has to be some control.
But that's part of the issue, like in a normal meeting, anyone can walk in the door. That wanted to participate in that meeting and unless they were causing some kind of confusion. So this is almost limiting input um. By stating that we are trying to control to make sure there isn't anyone um. You know, in the meeting to be disruptive or anonymous.
And I just know that there's been some experiences that the communications team's already dealt with some of that, and so that's why this is being recommended, is my understanding.
I understand that the more that we make our decisions based on that, it, we are limiting transparency.
I just think that to get in through a Zoom or through a webinar isn't that much different unless you want to provide a phone call in, which is more accessible. But I don't know that the difference between an open Zoom and a webinar Zoom is that different.
Well, even those things without it being streamed means that um it's very limited. Who will have access to the information um to even consider what is being discussed in the, in the meetings. Which we have a current problem with, but this would make it worse.
I mean, it's, I was also thinking that if, if all of the meetings are then recorded no matter, and then put up on the, like, the Facebook page. Afterwards, it actually in some ways makes some of our meetings even more accessible, maybe not during the meeting itself. But at least there's some meetings where they're not recorded, so at least they would now be recorded. And people could go back and watch the meeting later on if they wanted to too. And again, I wasn't thinking anything like the planning commission or the bar or. You know, ones that have some pretty serious impact on the city in general, but. Things like the sister cities trying to get an essay contest going. Um though, again, getting an essay contest going, when school's not in session, how do you get it out to everybody equitably? Is also difficult, so.
You don't, the schools haven't even figured out how to educate the kids.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You don't.
They're trying.
They are trying, but it's, oh, yeah. All right, so. What's the? And C R H A is not on this list, but I know that they would be, as the council member who sits on that board. We met last month, it wasn't broadcast. Um and.
Was there a webinar?
Um it was right after the, um and I would have to talk to Betsy. I really don't know with they.
There was a webinar.
Okay. Would um happen after the fact, but that's definitely one that would need to continue. The way that it had been um before and just in order, the C R B was also. They sent in, um they're not official board yet, but there was a email, I think, from the People's Coalition. About, about that group getting together. So. Let's just continue and then I guess the CRB is the one we've come to at the end. So the sister cities, you all want to add them to the list or hold off because we're already up to there's eight. Nine.
Unless they can figure out a way to meet. For staff time, I'm up for holding off.
As am I.
All right, so the Social Service Advisory Board, they don't have any pending urgent issues or concerns, but Toing Committee. There's nowhere, I guess, it just says us going inactive just mean long or status quo. But noted that there are less people driving at this point and then there was no concerns from, I guess, staff at this term. The Tree Commission. They didn't think anything, they had require urgent attention, but they said that the backlog of work from not meeting would, you know, increase, I guess. You know, the workload once they do meet.
The Tree Commission is one of those that is basically saying to us, please appoint us some members. And there are a number of these organizations, the Sister City Commission, the Commission's got another, there's another one of those, there are others as well, where I think we, we've got some work that we need to do to get the, to get the organizations fully up, up to their proper number. Just thinking about the, the Police Review Board. As I recall, there was one more appointment that we were basically read, I, I think we were kind of ready to make that we hadn't yet made and then things went sideways on us at the beginning of March. But there are a number of positions where we had, we'd finally gotten some applicants that met, that met the right criteria. We needed to have a meeting to talk about them, to get them appointed and then, and then they could go, could go forward. So I, I think those are the kinds of things that we need to do as well, not just thinking about, about when they might meet, but if they're, if they're saying to us, our membership is severely depleted, which is what they're saying. With four vacancies and additional three members requiring reappointment, that's talking about the Tree Commission. Seems to me we've got some work to do too.
Well, Kena just messaged saying that the next appointments are scheduled for June 15.
We still have the ones from March. I just found my packet. I'm regretful that we just had so much going on that day during the closed session. I'm just wondering if we should go ahead and appoint those before we get to the June appointments. It's just going to be more. I'm just, these are just sitting here. I don't know.
I mean, we can make the, you know, appointments, but even you take something, the board like the CRB, if you're looking at this through an equity lens, you have to, you're talking about people not being able to meet in person, something new starting that, and whether there are technology issues to prevent involvement from everyone. So it's not as simple as, hey, did somebody appoint me to a board?
I'm not suggesting it's simple, but I am suggesting they're making the appointments to fill things out is something that we can be doing that is really independent of the discussion that we've been having today. Independent of the COVID-19 crisis and, and something that if, if it's, if it's scheduled to be dealt with on June 15th, maybe I missed that memo until today, but that's, that's news to me. I'm glad if that's the case, I'm glad.
But even with those appointments, I mean, you take a board like the Civilian Review Board and they had a lot of outreach efforts from community members to get the diversity on that board for people who have been impacted by negatively by the criminal justice system. You just have to think about those things are going to be limited and always think about who in this time of crises during a pandemic has the space to say, I'm gonna add to my plate while I'm trying to continue to ensure the safety of myself and my family and all the other people I come in contact with to join a board at this time. And so I just hope, well, I'm just gonna keep seeing it that we need to be mindful that all of this could produce equity, a lot of equity issues.
So are you suggesting that we wouldn't appoint anyone until we get to a more normal business mode?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. If we're not gonna be, if that's not gonna be across the board process and then limiting certain boards, especially like what I said about the Human Rights Commission, then you have the, you could potentially make things worse. Because there's no one out there being mindful, who's, you know, mindful of like the equity issues. So you def, even, you definitely wouldn't want to, you know, say, yeah, Planning Commission, PLACE and the BAR can, which are all about development and then put everything else on hold. So that's not what I'm saying at all. I think it's a very difficult decision, but I just want us to be mindful of staff time. Especially not wanting them to stress themselves in, in turn, and any, even with the CRB things that I'm very passionate about. And that they are not able to focus on safety and wellbeing. And then equity is always going to be a top, top for me. Okay, so.
Tree Commission. The rest are pretty much, there were no pending issues. And then there's a note from Public Works at the bottom.
Meeting on hold for September for you. And the CRB, what are their thoughts there?
Kena just messaged on that, that as a new board, the CRB also needs orientation with the city attorney in closed session.
Yeah.
So I guess before they meet, that has to be scheduled?
No, typically you would do that when they meet at their first meeting. But they've not had their first meeting yet.
Right, and I, I mean.
Can they meet before the last unfilled position is appointed?
Sure.
Yeah, they were going to. I think they were getting ready to schedule it.
In this packet, we actually have an applicant for that position.
Right.
Okay, so.
Nikai, did you see the note from the Public Works Department at the bottom? It's like.
Yeah, I have from committees. I think there's a general need to conduct community engagement on a project level. For example, if we have a project that needs to engage neighborhood association or stakeholder groups, we would likely need support from the communication department. Yeah, I don't know, is, Paul, Mr. Obergdorfer, is he on the call?
I am.
All right. Could you just share an example of that with us?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
We just got a note from Marty that said, aside from committees, I think there's a general need to conduct community engagement on a project level. For example, if we have a project that needs to engage a neighborhood association or a stakeholder group, we would likely need support from the communications department.
That's correct. And I can give you an example of that. Currently, we're doing the landfill diversion. We have a consultant working with us on looking at evaluating that, that particular contract and the program overall. And so, you know, that would require some significant community engagement so that we reach out and, you know, hear the voice of all of our prospective residents. In addition to that, things that are small projects and have significant impact. And if you think about like the neighborhood associations, traffic calming is a big one. And, and I think public engagement in terms of getting feedback from them on the issues that are anecdotal is very important and not necessarily things that we may capture through the city channels.
All right. And I think that's just very, you know, sort of along the lines of what Counselor Payne, you were discussing in terms of HAC, your comments regarding HAC, wanting to make sure that they can, you know, provide suggestions or influence the decision-making around the funding streams coming out of, you know, that office. Which that's official board, but that's, you know, just the community and public engagement.
If I could, sort of random, but connected to that maybe, it's just that I don't know what the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee normally does. But I know that I've already received a number of emails today from people asking about, like the, the press release went out today about all the parks and pools being closed over the summer. And I've gotten a number of emails already from people asking about like, you know, what are kids gonna do who don't have access to private pools or private activities or their parents work during the day in the summer, like, what if any accommodation can exist for the, for children who sort of rely on those areas? Again, I don't, I'm not even sure what the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee even does, if it would play a role in getting feedback on that kind of thing, or what if anything can even be done, but I just know. I think that's something we're gonna get more feedback from.
Yeah, and I guess we can. I mean, they didn't request it here, so I guess that's possibly another conversation, but I see where you're going, but yeah, we're gonna get a lot of feedback on that decision. And we just, I guess, have to be ready to discuss it. I mean, I don't know.
Mayor, if I may weigh in, so my interactions with the Park and Rec Board and my understanding is essentially they are more in a position to talk about master planning and programming, trails, things of that nature. And what we're dealing with, with the pool closures is more operational. It's based, you know, decision-making currently through the IMT in the Parks and Rec Assist or Interim Director. So I would believe that, you know, while they would like to have input as to whether or not the pools would remain open. Right now, it's a safety concern and, and to me, it's really an administrative decision.
Yeah, I don't think they said it. I think he was just making, seeing if they, if that's something that they would spend their time trying to figure out alternatives. But yeah, okay, so.
Do you want to hear, do we have, I can't remember, is the agenda have us having public comment again before we get into our next round of discussion?
Yes, but I just, at first, just to make sure that we are clear on the boards that we are considering at this time is the Board of mobilization, the CDBG Task Force, the Red Street Task Force, the Electoral Board, HAC, the Human Rights Commission, Planning Commission, CRHA, the Retirement Commission. And noting that staff would possibly need support at times, like the public work request. And did we add CRB to that list or are we not?
I think it's one to consider. I mean, I'm unsure what their next steps are, but I know they've, like everyone else, got emails about them sounding like they want to meet sooner rather than later.
I don't think that email from, did that email come from anyone who had been selected?
No, it was the People's Coalition.
All right.
And just keep in mind that Planning Commission has BAR wrapped in with it. The Planning Commission has the BAR wrapped in with it.
Yeah, I have that. And, and we didn't say PLACE. I don't have.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So yeah, Mr. Will, we can open it up for any public comments that we may have at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're on the webinar and you'd like to speak to council, you can click the raise your hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're listening via one of the streaming platforms or live on Comcast Channel 10, you can get to the webinar by going to charlottesville.gov/zoom. You can get the registration information and pretty quickly get online and join us. Mayor Walker, first up is Ashley Davies. And Ashley, I know you have both, you have two instances on this account, so I, I don't know if you want me to activate your telephone. I'm gonna try that one first. Ms. Davies, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Nice to see all of you. Hi, everyone. Ashley Davies. Nice to see all of you this afternoon and thanks for taking time to discuss this topic. I am a city resident at 1,000 Locust Avenue, work at Riverbend Development, and I'm also the Chair of Cadre. And I just wanted to chime in in particular as it relates to land use and land development applications and just being in contact with a lot of local professionals. Just want to reiterate the importance of getting the land use process back on track and getting Planning Commission meetings scheduled and finding a way to accept new applications into the city. One of the things that is important to understand is that in creating a redevelopment plan and moving forward with that process, it's usually a multi-year process to get to the point of even submitting or once it's in, you know, it takes a while as well. And so just to keep those deals moving, it's really important that we can get things back scheduled again and keep deals in place so we can have those funding streams for city revenues as well as being able to create new housing in the city. And in particular, I do really appreciate that Charlottesville has a robust community involvement process. So I want to make sure that that doesn't change. But I think we also need to, as we're doing for all these other meetings, if we maintain the community meeting requirement, if that's our main barrier to entry right now, then we need to figure out a way that those can also be a virtual meeting that's really inclusive to get that comment. But I think it'll have a really negative compounding effect if we continue to pause new applications in the city. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Phil Duranzio. Phil, you're on with council. Go ahead.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, counsel. I just wanted to follow on to Vice Mayor McGill's suggestion about Zoom meetings and using resources other than that at the city. And that two of our members have sort of offered unbitten that they do have sort of substantial commercial Zoom capacity and that if it helped to facilitate anything, they were offering that up. If that would take any of the, sort of decrease the, the strain and obligation of staff for any of these meetings. I don't know how that would integrate or not, but it is certainly something that's been offered up.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised at this time. Oh, we have another one. Rory Stolzenberg. Rory, go ahead.
Hey, council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I just wanted to highlight Brian's slide from earlier, which I think is a really great slide. And it really clearly lays out the, the questions that we're facing here. And, and thinking specifically about the left side of that slide, right? So if you guys don't have it in front of you, the left ones are all of the smaller commission meetings that aren't PC and CRHA and BAR that, you know, up till now were always held in like back conference rooms and like the basement. And unless. And unless a member of the public was actually going to go to City Hall in the middle of the day, there was really no window for them to even see any of it at all, except maybe like Molly's tweets. So I, I think it's important to acknowledge that we have a real opportunity here to take what was a very broken system and, and make it a lot better. And, and really make it transparent. And we're definitely facing some headwinds where the biggest one is that everyone kind of has better things to be doing right now in their own personal lives than to be paying attention to this sort of thing. But we, we also have this big opportunity of, you know, everything changing so suddenly and really forcing us to do better than we were doing before. So I, I hope we really consider creative solutions to these problems. I, I think it's very possible to do this with really no or very minimal staff involvement at all, even from regular staff and not communication staff, where we can expect a commission chair to host their own Zoom meeting, you know, act as the host and, you know, kick out anyone disruptive or mute them if that actually becomes an issue. But, but not to shy away from having these things publicly just because of the fear that that would happen. And then to use kind of built-in tools like Zoom's ability to broadcast directly to Facebook Live and to YouTube to get that out into the public realm for more people than would have seen it before. Of course, it's not as good as public access TV. But again, we're talking about meetings that never would have been on TV 10 or even on Facebook Live or anywhere at all really, except when the minutes were adopted six months later. And, you know, of course, there's more complex considerations for PC and CRHA and B A R. But, you know, those were things that already involved quite a lot of staff time in, in terms of, you know, putting on the production. So, yeah, I, I think you guys are doing a great job of really walking through these and considering the possibilities. And I, I hope we'll be bold in pursuing a real transparent meeting system from now on. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
If there's anyone else that would like to address counsel, just click the raise your hand icon. Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Will.
So a couple of those comments had me curious around what flexibility we do we have to take the assistance of outside organizations who might want to take the lead in like setting things up? I'm just not clear on what, what restrictions there might be for us to do that as long as we're recording them and providing them. Does it matter who the host is?
Well, I'll, I'll let Brian chime in if he has any other thoughts. I mean, from a purely legal perspective, FOIA is, you know, it's about the openness of the meeting. Now, in terms of voluntarily or, or I think Mr. Duranzio talked about, well, what if we have a hack commission member who would like to donate their particular Zoom account? That's fine, but there can't be public money involved. Now, saying that, I do want to address a couple of things that Mr. Stolzenberg brought up. And, and I understand, and I think it is, it is worth noting that obviously the council through years past has, has faced a number of folks who've, who've tried to intimidate in a physical manner. So I, I agree with Mr. Stolzenberg, you know, I, you think about some of the folks who used to come into chambers. And I know at the county, when I was there, sometimes you'd see people with firearms on their, on their hips, so to speak, and they'd come in and speak. And so, I mean, I think there is sort of, whether you're doing something virtually or in, in person physically, there's always going to be that element. But I, while I understand what he's saying about minimal staff involvement, there, there is going to have to be. If there's not communication staff there, there's going to have to be some training of board chairs and the like in terms of the First Amendment. And when it is legal to say, okay, stop, you know, I'm going to have to remove you from the meeting versus the leeway that, that would have to be provided in a virtual meeting. And I, I do think, again, I understand what he's saying, that, that there are issues, you know, physically as well as virtually, but it is important to understand, we also have a First Amendment obligation. And, you know, different chairs, different folks might have different interpretations of when it's time to remove somebody from a Zoom call. And I think staff is going to have to train if, if that's what boards and commissions want to do. We're, we're going to have to give them sort of some legal advice on, you know, the difference in disrupting a meeting versus the difference in somebody making a comment that you might not agree with or, you know, talking accidentally. Just because somebody accidentally says a sentence doesn't automatically give you the right to remove them from a Zoom call. I, I did though want to also ask the counsel, and I think it is worth something since we're talking about virtual boards and commissions. And Mayor Walker brought up equity earlier. We haven't talked about the possibility that what if on boards and commissions, there are members who don't have access to high-speed internet? And they cannot participate. You know, legally, you need a quorum of a body to have a meeting. But there are issues I think associated with, well, I would like to be part of the meeting, but I don't have the ability to access the meeting. And I do think it's important before any of this, any of these boards and commissions start meeting, that, that the council gives staff some direction that what should be done if a board or commission member says, I'd like to participate, but I don't have the means or the, the internet connection or bandwidth to participate.
And what that could potentially mean, you know, the schools offered the computers and they extended, you know, the take homes to more students than they normally would and provided hotspots for students who didn't, you know, have internet access. Is that a requirement that we do that? And we're back to who has? And that, that was one of the things that I was thinking about because we are, you know, running into that with some of the housing. You know, initiatives that even during this time that we've been talking about, even the testing that we just did at Crescent Halls. We could contact without being in the, you know, building. That was something we had spent significant amount of time on because you can't just pick up the phone and call everyone. So it has to be, you know, a part of our thought process.
And, and I agree. And I think part of the thought process for me too is thinking about what barriers existed before. If you've got a commission meeting at 2:00 PM on a Tuesday in a, the basement conference room, you know, who is working that can't attend that meeting as well?
And yeah, that's a problem. I mean, I couldn't even attend, couldn't attend one of the meetings and had a staff member tell me I needed to adjust my stuff. So I get it. You know, it's a problem. It's been a problem the way that those meetings have been run. And I've been bringing that up since I've been one counsel.
Mayor Walker, a couple of points just to follow up on Mr. Blair's comments. The, the Zoom capacity is really not the issue, I think, for counsel. So while we appreciate the offer for folks to share their commercial Zoom accounts, I, I think we can make do with the accounts we have. We just need to make sure we're not scheduling meetings that overlap and would exceed our capacity. Another, you know, teachable moment during the previous public comment session, we had one person who spoke to you via telephone. So it is possible to call in to the Zoom webinars. However, there is no, I'll use the term you're familiar with, there's no caller ID. So Ms. Davies' number, you know, the only reason I knew that was her phone number is that she sent me an email and said she wanted to speak. If we had a lot of telephone participants in a Zoom call, there's not really a way we can identify who's who unless they register in advance, which is the protocol we've been following with council meetings that when the, the clerks know that if somebody contacts them and says, we want to participate in this council meeting, we want to listen via telephone, we'll make that accommodation, provide them the number. And if they want to then speak during public comment, we need to know their phone number so that we can find them in the attendee list. I probably went down in the weeds way too much, but anyway, just to make the point that there are other tools that if, if, you know, this goes on for a longer period and we want to make sure we have a robust telephone participation approach. There are other tools we, we might want to use that create these smarter cues where people are identified and staff then are managing that queue and it's more like a telephone town hall. And that that would be combined with a sort of a webinar approach.
Yeah, and that's been one of my questions to you since, you know, a, a couple of times doing this, doing this time was how do we get those people who may need to call versus, you know, use? So it's good that we are working on that or that there's a potential.
And somebody may have just proved me wrong because a new phone number popped up with a raised hand. So maybe that person knows how to do it and they can tell me offline.
Okay. So we have a comment?
They've now, I've lowered their hands because again, I don't know who they are. If you would like them to school me publicly, we can call upon them.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. You know that.
It, it was Mr. Stolzenberg who's telling me star nine is how a telephone participant can raise their hand. So.
Well, thank you, Roy. What will we do without you?
I'm a Tori.
To follow up on something that I think Mr. Blair had commented on. I'm curious, at how many of meetings other than city council and perhaps Planning Commission? At how many meetings do you ever get into a situation where there's a First Amendment issue that arises? Obviously, we're talking about it in terms of the, of the Zoom and so on. But how is that different aside from a little bit of technology? How is that different from the conduct of regular meetings?
To answer your question, Counselor Snook, usually there is a staff member there. Now, you're right, most other public bodies do not have a level of controversy I associated with them. Though I think it's certainly considerable with certain issues that, you know, for instance, I think the Parking Advisory Committee, I mean, obviously the council is hearing a lot about the parking garage, for instance. Probably, and, and Mr. Ingles on the call, probably a few years ago, that body received almost no real public participation. But I think people are more and more being aware of those issues and certainly at least emailing counsel and following the proceedings of the Parking Advisory Commission more than they would have, say, five years ago.
I guess I'm, I am also curious generally about whether there have been problems at any of these meetings. I mean, I, I just, where I'm coming from here is this. As, as I read First Amendment case law, almost all of the time that there is some issue about the First Amendment, about public access and so on, it usually comes down to whoever the chair of the meeting was, thought he was a lawyer and he was not. And he was flat out wrong in expressing his view of what the First Amendment really called for. I'm not aware of us having had problems like that in Charlottesville. And I'm wondering that's, if that's because we just have a particularly adept group of people chairing the committee or, or committees or, or, or why? Is that, is that something we need to be concerned about?
You know, I mean, it's, it's a fair question. I'm not aware of anything right off the top of my head saying that, like you have mentioned, I do think about, and I believe there have been a couple of cases outside of Charlottesville. You know, I think there was one Stenberg out of Chesterfield County a few years ago from the Fourth Circuit. And I think, you know, Roanoke, I believe Roanoke City Council had an issue concerning the First Amendment at one of their meetings. But in terms of like small or boards and commissions that aren't as high profile, no, I'm not aware of any issues. But I still, I, I think the Zoom format and, and First Amendment's one component, but FOIA is, is another that we'd want to train whoever's moderating the meeting. Again, you know, in this format, right now, Brian has the ability to mute different microphones. The Zoom calls and, and I will admit, I haven't participated on too many outside of this platform. But the ones that I have, I don't know that there, without a moderator, that anybody's microphone would be muted. And so I guess the question I'd have then is, you know, if we had a, I'm looking at our Brady Bunch screen right now. If we had 15 folks on a Zoom call and none of their microphone, there wasn't a moderator. And so there wasn't any ability to determine who can and can't speak. If somebody who's not a committee member starts to speak and the chair says, I'm sorry, you're out of order. You know, we're, we're conducting business right now and that person begins to speak. What's the line between taking them off the call and, and, you know, sort of allowing them to continue to speak or trying to keep them on the call, but keeping asking them from disrupting the business of the commissioner board? And I do think in a Zoom format and formats like this, if you don't have a moderator there who's able to, and maybe the chairs can do it, but they need to have some instruction on removing people from meetings or muting people in meetings. And what is that line versus, again, somebody makes a random comment in a Zoom format?
And Mr. Snook, we've had three different meetings where we've had to remove participants. Primarily, those have been Seaville's 360 broadcast and the Health District's Town Hall meetings. And, and in one case, the person registered via email, got the link and was asking inappropriate questions in the Q and A module. And then on another occasion, people came in via telephone, didn't seem to register and somehow got in. And they were brought live into the conversation, said something inappropriate and had to be removed. So, you know, we've had only a couple of months' experience using this tool. Part of the approach we're taking right now is to mitigate some of the security and, and opportunities for, you know, pranksters to, to interfere with the meeting.
So I think what we would need next is to have the meetings that we think we would like to. I mean, if there's one that we just know for sure, then we need to make that decision. If we're talking about 10 meetings, are they going to meet at the regular times that they usually meet or are we gonna? Is that based on their schedule? Do we need communications to look at scheduling? I think that, that would be the next. Are we moving past the four meetings that have been? Maybe that's the first question. The meetings that have been streamed to the channel, the access, the TV channel network. Are we requiring all of the meetings, the, the nine or 10 meetings that we have? Are we requiring all of the meetings, the nine or 10 meetings that we have agreed upon? Do we want them all on TV or are we saying to continue with just the four?
I'm in favor of us just continuing with those that have been streamed traditionally and relying on the webinar access for the others, given the staff commitment to that.
And again, we can make the video available both on our website. It's available on Facebook Live. It can be, you know, and then if there are certain meetings that would benefit from greater attention, we can definitely rebroadcast those on Channel 10. We'd certainly like to have that content.
So can we broadcast all the meetings even if we don't stream them?
I mean, really, the only limitation is, you know, time in the broadcast schedule and how many times we repeat meetings. So we've sort of, you know, the, the viewers who rely on Comcast Channel 10 sort of have an expectation, you know, back pre-pandemic about when they could watch, you know, the Planning Commission, City Council.
A lot of people do watch it, especially a lot of our older citizens, because, I mean, get a lot of feedback from them, people who've never set foot in city council chambers.
And we can definitely take a different approach with that schedule and make more meetings available there through that channel. The, again, the point I was trying to make earlier is it's the live television aspect that adds to the staffing needs. If we're just recording it and broadcasting it later, that makes it easier.
Okay, so I'm in support of, I guess, keeping the, it's the V A R C R, CRHA Council and Planning Commission, that's the current?
Yes.
And so keeping those as the ones that are streamed live. Right?
Correct.
And I think those would follow their normal schedules would be my proposal for those, that group of meetings.
Sounds reasonable to me.
All right. All right, so that's one decision. So with that, are we making the recommendation that all of the business is done in this one meeting per month? Or are we allowing the individual, the subcommittee meetings that sometimes, and I guess it's not subcommittee meetings, we're planning commission, but sometimes they have additional meetings. Would we have to require anything they would need to prepare for the meeting, Mr. Blair?
I would also talk to, I'd also want Brian's feedback, but I, I think we can make this work. I do.
Their pre-meetings could just be like a webinar, because those aren't, those are just done in the NDS conference room.
Right.
Are those even public?
Yeah.
They, they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we go, so those four, and so then what?
The Electoral Board normally meets in the electoral offices. I mean, that's technically not even our board, but we need to support it because they don't have the staff to support it. It's that weird.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah.
Live, I mean, like live streamed on the TV. I don't think, I think all the other boards, even if they're just like put as far as like being on Channel 10, if they're just put out afterwards to, I think that's even more, that's reaching out to more people than would normally have seen some of these boards.
So you would recommend that all of the boards be put into the rotation at least once?
Well, maybe not like the Board of Equalization, that's, I mean, that's a one time a year. It's pretty much only pertinent to the people involved.
But I think that people would, even to become familiar with that process, some people may be unaware.
I mean, if we could fit things in, I'm for fitting as much, I'm for putting as much out there as possible all the time, but there's also, you know, logistical things we have to work on and.
So what if we, so I think, because moving forward, I mean, without the board members here, what we could ask for for Monday is just to, I guess, to make sure that communications can work out the logistics for the other boards? Do we want the remaining, I guess? We have the Board of Equalization, the CDPG Task Force, the Red Street Task Force, the Electoral Board Hack and
Human Rights.
The Human Rights and the Retirement Commission. So I guess to just, if we are agreeing with that, then now we're just asking for that to be worked out. I would like to actually, for staff to look at what the schedule would require for all the boards we just discussed. And then maybe Monday, we can decide whether outside of these four, if that fits.
I mean, I'd like.
With what's, with what would be required to, to make these boards work?
I'd like to see that, and I'd also like to see if, you know, if maybe a survey went out to the members of the boards to see, one, make sure that everyone responds as a member, that we have good cut and what they need if they're able to take part and participate electronically. And then also.
Couldn't fix that, would we ask that question? Like if, if they do say, I don't have a computer or I don't have internet access, if we are not going to purchase it, then do we even?
Well, if it's only like, let's say it's only, if it's like, if it's 20 people, that's going to be more difficult. Then let's say it's like two or, if it's only two or three people, we might be able to get access for somebody.
It sounds like we even have this phone option as access.
Right, they could always call in on their phone and if you know that, you can, because the phone number can be kind of hard. It's not always front and center, like that can be provided with them. And I think we do, granted, it's not, you know, necessarily the most convenient, but our, all our library branches are Wi-Fi hotspots, right?
They're also closed.
I mean, but there's areas outside of them that have been set up to use as hotspots, at least in Abmaral County, all the JMR, JMRL branches.
So you want somebody to drive to a library and sit outside?
No, I'm just saying it's an option for hotspot. I mean, I know I had to use it once when my internet was down. So, I mean, I don't know, if there's other hotspot options, let's do it. I just don't know what they are. And again, someone can always call in without internet.
I mean, we're not going to know how extensive the problem is until we ask the members of the boards. I mean, if we ask them and find out this is a problem, then we need to problem solve it. If it's not a problem.
But do you think they would have told us that when we asked the first round of questions?
No.
No.
Because I don't think all the board members were probably contacted. I mean, I'm, I mean, I think if, and I mean, I'd be also willing to, if somebody sent me a list of people and their names and numbers, I'd call them and double check. I would happily take that on off a staff's plate if this.
Yeah, I think that we would have to do that to get some assistance, because contacting all the people on every board and commission, that's just a lot of work.
But we could just have the chair contact all.
But that's, yeah, but that's what we've been working with, the chair to get the information that we need. We can do that with this in terms of having the chairs.
If we contact the chair to ask them to reach out to the members and see if there would be any issues with, if they have any issues with resources in terms of needs to be able to participate.
Whatever, whatever works best. And like I said, I'm, I'm willing to be part of a labor pool if necessary. And then if we find out there, there is the level of the issue, then we could look at problem solving, how to help people be able to be part of it.
Hey, Walker, we would also need to consider that for the June appointments, whether that would be a consideration of contacting the people who are, you know, up for appointment to see their access as well.
Okay. So we are, if, if you all feel comfortable with making it, or if you wanted to, we are at the break time, so we can leave it at sending that information out. You know, to contact the board chair and to give us a potential schedule to make sure logistically the rest of the meetings work with communication schedule. Or if we are going to have further, if we need to have a further discussion today, then we would need to break and then come back and come back, have a break to continue.
I think we're pretty close, so I'd rather press on, even if it's five more minutes and just close the stuff out. The only thing I know is that we've been getting urgent requests for a couple of these meetings to happen as soon as possible. So the question is, what, what needs to happen from us tonight if someone wants to schedule a meeting as soon as Friday or Monday or whenever? Whenever they can be.
Like, we haven't had the staff create, like, we now have approved nine meetings total, right, to happen. So I think we would need to at least, it's Wednesday, so we still would make this decision by Monday to give staff time to create a similar kind of flow chart that was created before to say, to know what they would need to do to support each of these meetings. And if there was content communication that needed to happen with the chairs in between that time. And then the answer would still be made by Monday.
And then. Have the three day notifications at least.
Well, maybe Mr. Willer is saying they don't need time.
Well, I, I think if, if the direction from council is that these nine or 10 bodies, you've approved them having meetings, then I think, you know, you delegate that to staff and between, you know, Mr. Blair, Dr. Richardson and myself, we can work with all the staff who interact with those bodies and figure out what's the best approach with the resources we have in some cases.
Excuse me, I was just, I would need before I would vote yay to know how much time that is going to be take from staff. So that's what I, I don't know if you can give us that now based on this. I think you would need some time to look at it. So that's why I was recommending that we hold off Monday, but I'm not sure with the other counselors.
I do have, I'm sorry, unrelated question is, do we, these, the list that's compiled here, was that based on people who responded or was it starting off with a list of boards and commissions? I only ask because I'm on the Historic Resources Committee and I see that that's not on here.
The request was sent to all liaisons for those boards, for all boards, and the chart is based on responses.
Responses, okay.
Because that's the, we are, CRHA board is not, it's not on there. So I'm sure that there, I'm, I can't remember every board I'm on right now.
No, I was trying to pull up that document and I couldn't find it that has all of them.
Yeah. Yes, I think it's definitely that some people were left or have been left, are left out of this list. We definitely know that.
Well, in terms of staff time, you know, for these, outside of the major four boards and commissions, particularly if they're not discussing, you know, really large agenda items, I don't see, I don't see the problem with a board chair hosting the Zoom webinar, putting it together, giving it to city staff to send out that public notice about it and having the meeting. I know the Thomas Jefferson Playing District Commission, that's how they've been doing it. Granted, you know, it's a different, different situation, but it's worked. I just, that seems to me like a reasonable way to have some of them start meeting as quickly as possible without also adding additional burden to staff.
And let me, my thought on it all is that I'm reluctant to have us do too much micromanaging when I think that maybe that the proper answer is to let the staff try to figure it out. And if they run into a problem, they can either, there's something they need us to mediate or something where we need, they need us to say to a board or a commission, sorry, you guys don't rate. And they don't, don't feel like they've got the wherewithal to do that, but they want us to do. That's the kind of thing we can do. I just, I, I think that we should trust the staff to, to take the next whack at it and tell us if there's a problem.
So that's what we're doing, like staff, we would be asking them to show us what the requirement would be of their time for something that we are asking them to start doing during a pandemic. So right now, we've just discussed a list based on our ideas of what we thought and what people sent in. And we, as Counselor Hill brought up, we don't even have feedback from everyone, but we still don't know, just bare minimum, how much time that's going to take from staff for those meetings. And I'm saying that I would like to know that before I would vote on anything outside of those four meetings. But if you all are saying we are just approving these nine and this is what you are comfortable voting on and you're going to tell staff to figure it out, that's what they're going to do.
And I just don't know the time commitment, is that just, I mean, Dr. Richardson, can you, can you speak on behalf of this as an overarching perspective on the staff commitment for setting up a Zoom webinar versus hosting an actual meeting?
Say that I would have to go back and check with everyone before I make that statement. I want to make sure that staff is okay with what we have in their time commitments before I can make a best statement.
I mean, I know we've got two board, the Board of Equalization and the Retirement Board have to meet soon, it sounds like. For the Board of Equalization, for legal reasons. And then the Retirement Committee sounded like it was something that needed to get done in a time.
Before the end of the year, right? So we made that decision Monday, they would still have time.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, I'm not, and I'm not sure when the electoral, when the electoral board meets normally.
So I guess we just need to, because I'm going to need to take a break if we are gonna, we just need to figure out if we are telling them, these are the boards, make them all work, or we are asking them for more information about how it would impact their schedules and time before we tell them.
I want to know how, I want to know how much it's going to affect their schedules and time before making a full decision.
Okay, Counselor Hill?
That's fine. We can wait till Monday.
Counselor Snook?
I'm fine with, with waiting. Again, I, I, I want it to be clear that I want to be guided by what staff says is doable and feasible without them having to, you know, work overtime and all the rest of that stuff. I want to be guided by what they say they can do.
Yeah, and we have these nine, so like I said, we'll look over it the next two days and, and figure it out and have it back by Monday.
And also.
And it would have been 10 with the CRB.
Well, and two, luckily, and two of them sound like they only need to meet this month. So.
Some of the boards, like you were talking about, like you were on, they only met three times a year or something like. So that wouldn't be hopefully a major time, you know, commitment, but the other, some of the other one.
One of them's meeting Friday, but it's a, it's a statewide board, so. The other thing is what Missy was bringing up with the, the Planning Commission. I think we need to, about public participation and how there's a number of issues with projects that need to still meet not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of FOIA and of public notification. I think we need to be really cautious of that to make sure that we understand that we've got to come up with some sort of process, I guess, that will get that public participation in a post-COVID world.
I agree with that. Counselor Payne?
I mean, I think it just varies significantly board by board. I think some can be sooner than later, but I'm fine waiting to get feedback. I mean, I think obviously the main.
I mean, I think obviously the major ones are going to be ones, I think, where staff has to spend time developing the agenda and um putting in that level of work, um, but I'm fine to wait to see all of them.
I'm wondering, given that Hack was one of the ones that's come up again and again, and they even wanted to post a meeting this week, could we let them publicly post the meeting for next Wednesday, which is their regularly scheduled Hack meeting? Um, knowing that on Monday we'll make a decision, but at least they don't have to then wait to get off schedule or to wait more days.
Would that be workable with Brian's schedule?
Supposed to be a webinar meeting.
Well, but I also think in terms of if we're talking about like demands, we would. If we're already prioritizing that one, we're adding that one in with the other four versus looking at that um fairly with all the information that we get on Monday.
I'm just, I'm bringing it up because there was an ask to have it on this week. And so I was like, we know we can't do it this week, but we can at least have the flexibility to do it as soon as possible after Monday if it's approved. I'm just offering some flexibility. I I'm not married to it, I'm just off, just know that has been something that was expressed and I know that Counselor Payne shared that interest.
I would say that just to make it a fair process, that if we are saying they can move on, but then we get the schedule and it's a lar, you know, a lot of, you know, the time commitment from staff and we want to remove some things. Um, if we've already said that they can go ahead and schedule, then we are kind of committing to that. I would, I would want to wait on that.
This was just more COVID focused, I don't, the funding we have, so.
All right. Okay, Mr. um Willer, I guess, are there any additional um people who would like to speak?
Uh, if you're on the webinar and you want to speak to council, just click the raise your hand icon. We'll bring you into the conversation. Currently, right now, we have um six attendees. And Mayor Walker, no one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay. All right, so then I, for us, it's, everyone's okay with knowing that we're going to move forward with the four meetings, including live stream in those meetings. And the other decisions, we're going to wait for more information from staff on Monday and that we will make the final decision during the council.
Fine.
During other business.
I still feel like.
I don't, I feel like I don't have clarity on the Planning Commission piece of it, like.
Uh. You know, like others have brought up, you know, I think that's the one that, I think the Planning Commission way more than any of the others involves the most staff time, the most public engagement and has the biggest decisions to make. And so, you know, I guess I I still have concerns about some of the concerns that staff raised about everything it entails for them as well as like, I'm not clear, are we? I guess we're saying the Planning Commission should meet, but are we saying it should discuss everything as normal, like only certain things?
And I think they, based on what we, I I would want them. So I can only make a statement for me and you all can chime in one at a time, I guess, but I would want staff not to do um any more than is um, you know, reasonable, like doing this time. So trying, one of the um Ashley Davies made a comment about being um, you know, kind of innovative with community meetings and those notifications to be able to move things along. And um I just, my thought there was just the, I guess, largest turnout we've had recently was with the um um, In the Street, right, project, the Streetscape project there. I think, right, that's a project. But um, you know, look, it it field planning commission. You know, meetings with people who wanted to, you know, comment on on that process. Um, and they were required, the engineers were required to have those public meetings to get public input. And there's no way that I can see that you would be able to, like, some strangers will come into town and have a create some kind of innovative way to meet that just, I don't understand that. So I wouldn't be asking staff to, you know, figure that out at this point, because I don't think there's a safe way to do that.
I just think either today at some point, I feel like we're going to need to make a decision to provide more specific direction of of what that means for the Planning Commission. To me, it's still unclear, um. Like, what specifically like crosses that line of being too much?
And I mean, this is something um maybe staff can weigh. Um, I think they already have, I'm trying to pull it up. You know, I think, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but I think from what staff has said that like right now, moving new projects forward would be impossible, um, almost, because they can't meet the, you know, community need. So I think we just need to say whether we agree with them on things like that. If they and if if we feel like we have a full list, or maybe we would ask them to present us with something Monday to say, these are the things that we think we can do at this time and um and then we can say that we agree with that.
Well, we also want to give Planning Commission the opportunity to weigh in on what types of matters they may want to hear or where they think we should hold off on.
That's fine, I mean. Did they share that during this process?
I don't know, I couldn't tell that there was a voice from the Planning Commission on that chart.
Yeah. Um. So I think all the concerns around um that I heard from NDS was the public hearing, you know, um the meetings before the public hearing that's required from the developer or the, you know, um like engineers on a project and then the um, you know, application proj- process and how it's hindered by that.
And the meetings required for the projects that the applicants, they have, the onus has to be on them to do that legwork and just to prove that they have done that community outreach in whatever ways they have. And that shouldn't be falling on our staff.
No, but what is that even, even if someone says, check, we scheduled a meeting and nobody came because we're in the middle of a pandemic. That's, I think, what Missy was saying. That it would be impossible to get the type of community engagement that you need during this time because of what we're going through. Someone can say we attempted to have a meeting and no one showed up, and maybe that meets the requirements. I don't know um if that would meet it or not, just them simply holding the meeting. But I think from what I've heard them say, that could possibly be the case. So then you want, um, so there's a request to hear from Planning Commission and the staff about what plan, what Planning Commission will work on at this time. Okay, so we'll get that Monday, too. All right, any other comments?
Again, I mean, I don't see the harm in allowing the smaller ones to schedule, just because I see the staff impacts as being way disproportionate from each board, but um I'm not going to hold things up to prevent it from being evaluated Monday.
Okay, any other comments? Any comments from staff? Mr. Willer, okay.
Yeah, this is Sunny Huang with the City IT. Uh, one thing the um that I was wondering about that has come up in my conversations with Ms. Morton and others and my counterpart in other cities is the questions regarding um ADA requirement related to public meetings. So uh, Ms. Morton did request that we have the ability to provide text transcripts after their meetings uh for the voter uh part of it. And the other cities, specifically Alexandria, they mentioned having to implement closed caption for their Zoom meetings. Uh, which has a substantial cost associated with it, but technically is possible. So I would appreciate feedback from the City Attorney and others on the ADA part of it.
Okay, yeah, and could you all give us a, um, I, yeah, I don't even know what all of that entails, so that would be helpful just to know what we would be considering.
Are there any upcoming hard deadlines for CDBG?
Just the application deadline, let's do this upcoming Monday. From there, I'll take the applications, send it out email, um, PDFs to all the task force members, and then we'll um virtually meet sometime mid-June to discuss scoring.
So.
COVID money, right?
That's for the COVID money.
Are there any hard, well, I guess that's that's another matter. Hard deadlines for the non-COVID part?
The non-COVID portion, so the action plan is going to be submitted on the fifteenth. Um, aside from that, there's nothing else from that end.
And do you need to have a public meeting before you submit the other application on Monday?
For the COVID money?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mr. Willer, is there anyone out who would like to speak or public comment?
Um, if you'd like to raise your hand, click the raise your hand icon in the webinar. And we will bring you into the conversation. Mayor Walker, no one has raised their hand.
Okay. So um staff, you, are you clear on what needs for Monday?
Yes, yes, it's basically looking at the logistics for the scheduling, uh, and then um contact board chairs to get info. Um, uh, so that they can get info from their board members. Uh, and then get the information from the Planning Commission uh and staff about what they can work on and then look at to um the ADA uh issues.
Okay.
I'm also curious, like, what are we expecting from our agenda on Monday?
I know budget so far, that's the main one. Uh, and then I guess to discuss this again.
So there's nothing else on the agenda?
There may be a couple of other things, but I don't have it right in front of me at this time.
There's. I'm sorry.
You know, Mr. Blair, oh, and then we have a, um, I think we have a um, um, an executive session. Close session, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There's also, I believe, um, the second reading of the CDBG.
That's right.
And if you need any, if staff needs any help contacting chairs or anything, please, please let me know, I'm happy to assist.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I'm all set.
All right, Nina D'Arin, thank you.